The time is now, the time is now seven oh three. I would like to call to order the February first twenty twenty-three Parent and Community Advisory Council meeting. The purpose of this meeting is for the committee to discuss why we are here and what we hope to accomplish as an advisory council. This meeting will be recorded and is on the PGCPS Board webpage for the public to review or to view. Role call, Ms. Walker, can you please call the role?
Dr. Bagel? Dr. Bagel? Mr. Dixon? Mr. Dixon?
He, he is here, Ms. Walker, he needs to unmute.
Okay. Mr. Epps?
Here.
Ms. Hollingshead? Ms. Hollingshead? Dr. Jackson? Dr. Jackson? Ms. Lundey?
I'm here, good evening, everyone.
Ms. Brown? Ms. Mayo Brown? Ms. Mayo Brown? Ms. Millhouse?
Present.
Dr. Porter?
Good evening, President.
Mr. Carter Ross? Mr. Ross? Ms. Thorpe?
Present.
Ms. Walker, I am present. Mrs. Welsh?
Present.
Ms. Wood?
Here.
And Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Here.
And Clarence Dixnis, present.
Thank you. We have five members absent.
Okay, but we have a quorum? Yes?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Walker, so we are now, item one point two. I want to thank everyone for coming here today, I appreciate you all's time as always. I just want those who are viewing, this, this is a volunteer role and commitment. That we are not just committed to ensuring that our children and the people in our community are doing well, but that we are doing well as a school district. So I am your Chair, I'm Dolores Millhouse of the Parent, the Community Advisory Council, Representative for District Seven. Before I proceed, I would like to acknowledge Board Liaison, Ms. Adam Stafford, for the work that she continues to put in for us and accompany us this evening. I also want to thank the Board Office staff for their support, Ms. Rosa Lopez, and it, we want to say farewell to Mr. Joe Day Newsom, who used to be with here with us, but he's no longer present with us. And every PCAC member that is present here, I see Mr. Ross has joined us, welcome, Mr. Ross, how are you?
I'm fine, apologies for being late.
No worries, thank you. And at this time, we'll now move into item one point three, adoption of the meeting agenda for February one twenty twenty-three. Are there any objections to adopting the February one twenty twenty-three agenda? Hearing none, the meeting minute, the meeting minutes, the meeting agenda is approved. And at this time, we're in item one point four, approval of the minute, the meeting minutes for December seventh twenty twenty-two and January eleventh twenty twenty-three. At this time, we will only be discussing January eleventh twenty twenty-three because we still have to get the updates for December seventh twenty twenty-two. So at this time, are there any objections to adopting the meeting minutes for January the eleventh twenty twenty-three? And postponing the adoption of the meeting minutes for December seventh twenty twenty-two until our March meeting? Hearing none, the meeting minutes for January eleventh twenty twenty-three are approved. And the meeting minutes for December seventh twenty twenty-two will be approved or adopted at our March meeting. At this time, we'll move into item one point five, report from the Board Liaison, Ms. Adam Stafford.
All right, hi, everyone, and good evening, and I apologize in advance if you hear some screaming, some crying. Like so little, little people running around, so, um, I just want to say, I continue to just be so grateful for the great work you all are doing. I had a chance to connect with a few of you just on what's happening in your community and sort of how you're connecting with parents around policy zero one zero one, and just please continue to keep up this great work. I wanted to give you just three quick updates on things I'm working on to support you all. Number one, we are hoping to have a meet and greet for you all to meet your board members. And we're hoping for that to be in role, so you can help me with the dates here, but we're thinking one of the last board meetings in February. For you all to come to the Board Office and have some light fare and to connect with your board members and just, you know, establish that relationship. So we'll be working with Ms. Millhouse to kind of get a date out to you all, and hopefully we'll see all of you all there. We also are working on finding a way for you all to receive information from the community. So I know that many of you are, you know, you've hit the, hit the ground running, you're out there, you're getting, giving out your phone number, your email address, and that might become at some times overwhelming as you're getting parents that want to share information with you, and so I've been looking into how to get you all some type of email address or just a way to kind of field, you know, suggestions from the community, so we are getting some board approval on that. Just so that you all can have, you won't have to give out your personal information. I also just wanted to share, if I may share my screen, just to show a brief roadmap of sort of the, the arc of where we're going in terms of board policy. And of course, you know, this, I, I'm going to ask Ms. Welsh if she has anything she'd like to input here, she certainly can. But, you know, when I view right now, I'm sorry, give me one second here. Um, I view the steps of where we are right now, sort of in the gathering input phase. And then, you know, as you all get deeper into the policy, you'll probably have an opportunity to identify some gaps and some suggestions. Maybe the same way you reviewed the bylaws, you could consider using that same method to review the policy using Google Docs and the comment feature. Making some prioritization of some of the top recommendations, developing your report, Ms. Millhouse has been talking about the report that you all be putting together, and she'll be leading you all through that. And then my envisioning is that you all would present this to the Policy and Governance Committee, gain input from Dr. Golson and the Administration. Once it's passed through the Committee, then presenting that to the Board, first and second reader with public comment in between, and then announcing those changes to the community. And so, you know, of course, Ms. Welsh and Ms. Millhouse, if you all have anything to add here, this is just a, a rough outline of kind of where I'm seeing the arc of our work together, going from the Board perspective. If there's anything you all wanted to add in, certainly, yeah.
Is, is there any way you can go back up to the, go up, summon the document, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, prior to, throughout the report. So can you talk a little bit, when you're talking about gather community input, what, what does that look like? Because I, you know, and I know, and speaking with everybody, the outreach that is happening. But we, we do know that it's on a very micro level, right? Because it's not, it's, there's no way that we can reach the masses, right?
Right.
And so in gathering community input, is that also going to be driven by, like you all do, the meet and greets as the various Board members are doing now, which the frequency is picking up, it's, which is great. Will there be that input that's also provided? Or are you just looking at when we go out? Because I, I, I see it as in tandem, right? You know, we, we are really an extension, we're partnering, but you all already have items set up, like email boxes, you have administrative support, you, you have a whole office that supports you all. So as we are, you're going out getting information, we may be in various groups connecting, we're looking to bring that information together. And then present it from a PCAC to you that will then present to the Board with the recommendations, right?
And I, I agree with you, and you know, Ms. Millhouse talks a lot about parents as partners, and I do view this as like that partnership, and what I would say would be, for example, in my last District Four Advisory Meeting, our PCAC members for District Four, I think she's here, Kesha. And Ms. Lundey, they came and they actually had a session in my monthly meeting where people gave them, gave them feedback on the policy you all are looking for. So that kind of collaboration between PCAC members and Board members, we definitely want that to happen, and so hopefully the meet and greet can help to foster some of those connections. But you're exactly right, like, I think that the gathering input phase is the survey that I believe you all are going to be working on and developing the, the information that you're getting from people reaching out to you on social media, the people that you meet at events. And just what I encouraged my representative to do is to sort of maybe make like a file or some type of way that you're, you know, sort of condensing all of this information that you're receiving. So that as you guys begin to prioritize some of the suggestions, you can draw from all of the sort of community interactions that you've had. So I hope that answered the question, but I, I certainly do view it as a partnership between you and, and your Board Member.
Yes, it, it did, I just wanted to make sure that I understood it from the point of when we're going out and then information that you're also hearing, because it, it really forces the collaboration between me and my district member, right? And, and so, and, and that's what we're doing, we're working with you all, you know, in that way, we're dividing and conquering and coming back. You know, and then when we're coming in as a group, we're able to speak to it from the civic community standpoint, the business community, the parents, the community partners, everyone is, the voice is there. But it's not separate from the work that you all are already doing in the community as the Board Members. You now have a, a added partner, that's just like giving you that perspective, so that, I think that, that's good, because it helps, you know, really align how we need to be working through and giving us a very clear voice when we go out, as we're going out. So it's very clear what we're saying and what we're, you know, moving towards in, for this time that we're here for the two years that we are here to the next cycle, or next group comes in, so, thank you.
No problem, and Ms. Millhouse, one other thing I would add to my report is that we're meeting on Friday, the Vice Chair and I, this Committee to discuss the Board Retreat, I'm not Board Retreat, the PCAC Retreat. And so we're going to be talking about some of the things you all want to have happen, so that you all can come together, bond as a group, set your vision and goals. So that, you know, we're, you know, really effective and produce some great reports over the next couple of years.
Thank you, Ms. Adam Stafford, I, I appreciate that. Does that conclude your report? Thank you, and so that's a great segue, because you just knocked off one thing for me to talk about, which, um, was to mention that we are having a meeting, we have it down further on the agenda about the retreat. But I did not, I, when I asked to see if that was possible for us to have a retreat, to understand any funding restrictions, because we don't have a budget, right? And to understand what we had available to us to bring us all together. Ms. Adam Stafford, I know you wanted to meet and wanted me to give your report, and I don't want you to think that I was ignoring you, but I was just like, I can't give your report. Because I need to speak to the Committee, because I need their input, now that I know that we can move forward with this, I want to make sure that, um, all of our voices are heard in the development of this four-hour retreat. It's not long, so we want to try to do what we need to do in four hours, but it is focused around, we created the mission and the vision. But us ensuring that we are focused on what we all agreed upon, which was policy zero one zero five, right? Family and Community Engagement. Focusing on how do we create a culture of equitable engagement in PGCPS? Where everyone can see themselves in the definition, and if we work to improve how we engage, then it addresses, you know, a parent feeling as though they're not getting the resources that they need for the academic support, because they know how to advocate, they know how to engage. So I, I thank you for that, and I appreciate you hearing me. But also, I heard you, when you mentioned that you, Ms. Walker, I think, gave you some input about parents needing to make sure, I mean, making sure that parents are signed up for messages with PGCPS. And, um, Ms. Lopez, can you pull up the jumpstart form? And when you also mentioned to Robin to share with us the policy tracker. I went and looked for the policy tracker, and it, it is, it is a heavy view, right? And as I started looking for things, I just realized, we just need to have a document that we can also share with parents on how do they jumpstart, get involved, and get engaged. So when I sent that out to you all, it did take me some time, because I needed to vet the URLs to make sure they were going to the right place, to make sure the information was up to date. And so that is a very good document, that while you're out speaking to people about engagement, how are they getting involved? You can share that document with them, if they want to know how, make sure that they're getting messages, right? How do I, how do I get involved with my Board Member in the meeting that they're having, how would I be notified? You got to sign up for that. You know, they need to know how to sign up for Board Meetings. And in doing that, they have to know where to go, you got to go to Board Docs, right? And most people don't know that you have to go to the PGCPS Board of Education website. So creating that document, Ms. Lopez, could you find it? No?
I apologize, Chairman House, I'm having a little bit of technical difficulty sharing the doc.
I can, I know the, the document.
Yeah, but it, it's okay, everyone's seen it, it's on Board Docs for the public to view. But in doing that research, I also discovered there was another file in there, in the Board's website. It said, "A Guide to Addressing Questions and Concerns." It was an amazing document, very simple, whatever you had an issue with, transportation, academics, you know, it told you what to do, step one, step two, so it's, it's an escalation chart for people. So I did update the document that I sent you all, because the information was updated, I sent it to the Board Office, and they then sent it over to Administration. And they responded very quickly, and so that is also updated. And so I, I like to believe that when we're going out, we want to arm ourselves with some information that we can share with people. So, you know, it's just to get engaged, to stay connected, and to be informed. And I think that's what we're doing as advisors, is making sure that people have that information, so then when we come back, we're, I'm thanking Ms. Adam Stafford, where we are making sure that people have the information that they need, so they can know where to go. So this is just, um, this is not everything, but I, I felt that this was a really good start to share, and at, at any point, if anyone has any suggestions, any things that we need to add, I will continue to check the links to make sure, you know, the information is up to date. But I thought that that was important, that when, Ms. Adam Stafford, when you mentioned it, I was like, this is a great idea, but you're not having to, everyone's not having to go and figure out, I'm going to do this form of this document, you know, we just threw it together, it's uniform, and then you all can just share it. It is in PDF format, so it's not really a cut and paste. But if you are in need of it in the Word Doc, I will actually add that as well. I also wanted to mention just briefly, I have been holding various conversations, and we have it down there in the survey to talk about it later. We are not creating the survey, the PCAC is not creating the survey. I have asked PGCPS to create the survey, but we will have a voice in making sure that the questions are representative of the body, the whole PGCPS body. And so I have a couple more meetings to go. I will be, as Ms. Adam Stafford said, we will be meeting Friday to discuss the retreat. And the idea, I did talk to Dr. Jackson, and I'm hoping that she'll be able to come on, but we're just going to talk about really what we can do on that four hours, but I want us to remember, we talked about focusing on engagement. Thank you, Ms. Welsh, when I met with you also last week, we did find the administrative procedure that aligned with Board Policy zero one zero five, and it was policy, administrative procedure forty-two one six, one six, one seven. One seven, four two one seven, and so that, that gives us more information to go out and talk to people about. But they will be a part of the discussion when we have the work groups to, that will be developed. They can at least see there's a starting point, so we're not building from ground zero. The last thing I want to mention is I want to thank, um, Ms. Lundey, and I want to, we want to talk about this a little later, but she had a great idea. And instead of us spending a lot of time on each meeting doing a round robin, everybody's telling me what's happening, and then we're compiling that information. And for note-taking purposes, we're going to create a form that you all could just, you know, input what you're doing and what's happening. So as Ms. Adam Stafford, it aligns with that, that, that walkthrough, that any topics that we see as a continuation that continue to come up, such as transportation, such as safety, that we can then quickly pull that information up, because we have a document that we're collecting the information from, and we're not just waiting to the meetings. Right, so you all can go in at any time, and when you're going out in between meetings and just update the form and just say, hey, this was the topic area, this is what's happening, you know? And then it'll allow us to bring it to our attention whether or not this needs to be added one to another policy that, you know, because we're just not tied to policy zero one zero five, but we're starting with that. But it gives us a, a starting point that when those concerns arise, then we can go and see what policies align with that, to see what's missing in that policy. So, and I do want Ms. Lundey to talk about it a little bit later on in the agenda, so I'm going to turn it over to her at that point. But I am done with my report. Now we will move on, if anybody has any questions for me, about anything that I said? Thank you. I am now going to move into the report of the CEO Designee. We want to start with Ms. Robin Welsh.
Good evening, um, first, a, a, as far as the actual policy progression, like the steps that were members shared, Adam shared, Stafford shared. I want to point out that the Board actually does have a, a bylaw ninety-three sixty that lays out the whole process for how policies are developed. And what it basically says is that, um, that, that the Board will conduct its deliberations on policies and obtain input from, from the public through the following procedures. And at the end of each school year, the Policy and Governance Committee will then approve a list of policies to review for the coming year with guidance from the CEO, the Board, and that, whether you don't, no longer have a Board Executive Director, but the CEO. And then the Committee, at the discretion of the Committee Chair, may review additional policies throughout the year. And so that's a, a number seven in that policy. But it also says, and you go up to standards, that policy development or policy revisions can be initiated in any of the following ways. By recommendation of the full Board, any Board Committee, or any Board Authorized Focus Work Group. So that is opportunity for the, for the PCAC to be able to provide recommendations to the Board on different policies to work on, and suggestions even related to the policy, and then, but the critical piece of this would be, and that I know that the Committee does work, um, near the end of the school year, they put together a list, and they, I present it usually in August, saying, these are the policies we are going to work on. The CEO also plays a major role in coming up with a list of what policies need to be updated or revised, or if there's a need for policies, as well as if filing the legislative session. That will drive many of the policies that are developed, because oftentimes laws are passed that say, you, the Board of Ed must develop a policy on such and such a topic, so, um, so anyway, so I, I really would encourage everyone to look at bylaw ninety-three sixty, because that does tell you the whole progression of how policies get on the list for policies we worked on, and then, and then the other part, and what Board Member, Stafford, Adam shared, was a piece about the public comments, so actually, we just had, um, three, three policies that I presented to the Board this, this month, and they, and Tuesday night, last night was our meeting. And they were revised pub, uh, policy three-five-zero-six, Public Charter Schools, and then revised policy zero-one-two-two, Data Dashboards, and then revised policy two-two-one-four, Trespass Mornings. And so the Board, the previous meeting, which right now we're having meetings every other week, yes, every other week, we do the legislative sessions, so in the previous meeting, the Board discussed these policies, and then I presented this past week, and they did vote for it to go out to public comment, so there will be something that might already be on the website saying that you actually, or that we encourage you, because they're posted for two months, two weeks, so that the public provides public comment. And then at the, and so then, and the next, actually, they'll be up, but the Board meet, that's unfortunate. The next Board meeting is actually, they'll actually discuss this in February twenty-third, so these policies actually won't go to the Board to vote for public, to have it go out for public comment until February twenty-third. But at that meeting then, when the, if the Board does vote and, and decides to send it out for public comment, they'll be out there for two, two weeks for the public to provide public comment, and then our meeting in March, once we get those public comments, and then we look over them to make decisions on revising the policies. And it's critically important, again, I just keep stressing how important it is to provide public comment, because that is an opportunity, and the Committee members think, listen to it very carefully. Unfortunately, we had two policies that were out for public comment. They came up on the, I, I think it's the January twelfth Board of Ed meeting, and the one was the naming of schools, school dis, that was previous, but anyway, it was out for public comment. One was policy three, thirty-five hundred, we had to do the naming of schools, school district facilities, dedicating areas of schools or school district facilities or grounds, and erecting monuments. And then revised policy forty-two hundred, which had to do with the rules of procedure and hearings requested under Section six-two-two, and appeals and hearings under Section four-two-five of the education article. We did not receive a single public comment on either one of those policies. We thought for sure we might get something, especially on the policy related to naming the schools. But we did not receive anything on those comments, on those policies, so of course then, so always, the first step is public comment, and then after we get the public comment, and we make any revisions based on public comment, then it goes back to the Board for first reader. So those two policies will now be going back to the Board, it'll show up at the February twenty-third meeting as first reader. So I just, I, the progression is a little bit off on the, on the, on the chart that, um, or the list, I guess I should say, that Board Member, I'm Stafford, provided. But there's certainly opportunity within policy nine, bylaw ninety-three sixty, to be able to, uh, for, and, and the Board welcomes public comment, and not public comment, but even prior to that, and for input and recommendations as relates to what policies are important to move forward, and changes that might be recommended, that are recommended to, to change those particular policies. So, so it's sort of, that's part of my report was just responding to Board Member Adam Stafford's chart or list of things, and then also telling what policies we've been working on. The other policy that we had a major discussion about, three, four policies, we actually had a major discussion about, and they're all interrelated. And this, this one, I had to prepare for this also, was a revised policy zero, it was policy zero- Um, and this, this one, I had to prepare for this also, was a revised policy zero, uh it was policy zero one one three. This one is school boundaries and attendance areas. Then the next policy was policy five one one zero point two attendance. And what they're referencing is attendance areas in that policy. This is very close to policy zero one one three because attendance areas are the same as drawing boundaries. So the two policies are very similar. And then policy eight and eight three nine one also talked about about boundary changes. So we did have a discussion about combining those three policies. And then the last one was policy twenty five seventy, which is the closing of school buildings. And we did discuss whether or not we wanted to, whether they wanted to combine those, combine that in with the other three. And we're going to do a little bit more legal research on that based on some inconsistencies in the law to determine if it's a good idea to place place that policy in with the other three, three. So we are going to be, that'll be a major project to make a revision and combine all those policies together. So that's where we are in the policy work. I can also let you know that we have worked on um administrative procedures. And for this past month, we did um uh do revisions to administrative procedure five one one one, which is registration and withdrawal of students. We also did administrative procedure four one eight five workplace bullying. Uh, we also did a new administrative procedure twenty nine fifty two point one. And that one is behavior threat assessments from employees, volunteers, contractors, parents, family members, and non-affiliated persons. And that one is mandated by law. And then we have administrative procedure twenty nine fifty two, and that was student behavior threat assessments. Um, and that one also is mandated by law. That was just revised, uh A P twenty nine fifty two one, the one related to employees and volunteers is new. But twenty nine fifty two, the student behavior threat assessment was just revised. And then administrative procedure five one one nine point three, which educational programs and services for pregnant and parenting students was revised. And again, that was um, that was mandated by the law because they had made changes. And then they said we must um have a policy and we must make changes to any regulations or procedures that we have. So those five policies have been worked on uh since our last meeting and went through the review process and then the approval process and have been posted. And then the other thing that has really occupied a lot of time for the school system completely is Maryland State Department of Education is conducting its audit of state aid programs. So all of our, many of our programs that have been funded through the blueprint is right, are right now being audited. And so massive amounts of information, I can't even begin to tell you how much information is being asked for by the auditors where they go through and check to make sure we've done everything that we're supposed to do as it relates to what the law requires and the usage of the funds that are coming through with the blueprint. And um they will be there, they will be here for, I think, another two, three weeks. And I have been assigned to be the person that they go to when something isn't turned in. And so I have been spending a lot of time with our staff, making sure we get all the information in the state um that requires. So these audits are pretty massive audits because, of course, they do not want, they want to make sure that we are using the funding that the state has provided um for the purposes that that it was set up to be used for. So that's what we're in the middle of right now. So that's sort of my, that's the things that we've been working on right now.
Wow. Thank you, Ms. Welsh. That that is, that's a, that's a lot. Um, and I, and I'll say that we definitely got to figure out how do we communicate that to the parent and community partners, so they understand why they need to come out. Um, a- and when I say we, I mean as a committee, how do we make sure that they understand how that policy impacts them? And why it's important for them to voice um their um support or um any concerns that they may have with the policy, so you know, they could support the change of it and improvement it. Um, you know, so sometimes people need to know how does this impact them? Because they're not, they may not have the time to read through everything, and it it may not be seen just in the title alone. And um so that's a way that we can kind of take this information and figure out how to compress it to make it digestible for the community, to show them that they really need to be involved. And it's not a heavy read, just, you know, how do we engage with them? So I appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions about what was shared?
Yes, uh my, my hand is raised along with Member Ross. So my question to, um, thank you, Madam Chair, my question to Ms. Member Welch. Wonderful. So I did um happen to look at the um or, you know, attend virtually, look at the Policy and Governance Committee meeting. And I wanted to know, um, are you all doing anything with respect to revising the policy or looking at the policy as it relates to the classroom sizes?
Not, not at this point. They have not, they have not, that's not even on the list for this upcoming school year. Um, but um, but no, it had, no, it's not, it's right now, it's not, it's not projected to be worked on at this point.
Yeah, and just as a additional question, um, what is the best way for people to sort of get pre-notice of what policies are going to be being discussed? And and where is the input most likely to be able to be acted upon? Um, is it just like monitoring the agendas of the Policy and Governance Committee? Or is there like something that uh can get a heads up that things are happening? Because I know there have been times where I've heard about a policy, but only as it's coming up before the full board. And um, you know, that's on me for not like looking at every, every committee meeting agenda. But um, yeah, just sort of like if I know somebody who's interested in tracking that, where should I point them?
So the Policy and Governance Committee does post its agenda um uh almost a full week prior to their meetings. And they're, and um, right now their meetings are every other Tuesday evening. So we had one last evening, which was what they, what was that date? I don't know, oh, it was, and it's February, January, so we're now in the beginning of February. So it'll be the uh probably like the thirteenth of February or something will be the next, next uh uh meeting. Um, and they, and that agenda usually shows up by, at the very latest by Wednesday. And then usually any of the items that are listed on the agenda are posted at the latest by Friday of that week. So that you can pull up this stuff and even look at it before the meeting. Um, they also, uh Policy and Governance Committee allows for a public comment. So I mean, meaning, just like in a board meeting where you can come, you can, and these are all virtual meetings. So you can attend the mean, meeting virtually, and during the public comment section, you absolutely can provide comments related to different policies or thoughts about new policies you'd like to see, or or revisions to current policies, any of those types of things. And then um, of course, then the process of when the policy is going out for public comment. And I do know that also in the board meeting that they talk about it too. But then during that pro- period, which is a two-week period, I'm making ensuring and encouraging people to please provide their public comment. Um, because we, they go, I, I, as well as the board members, look at all of the public comments that come in. And just like um Chair Milhouse shared, even the positive comments, the things about things they do like. We do, like I, because I'll usually be the one reviewing the policies, um there's comments, I will share that with the Policy and Governance Committee. So that they also know when people in the public actually do like the, you know, things that are in a policy, as well as the things they'd like to see changed. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I just have a quick follow-up question. Um so for the year, because I'm hearing you're saying, you know, right now, this is what they have on the agenda. So is there any way that, how far in advance do you all determine what policies you are going to review?
So they, so once, once the, the, the list is made up of every policy that we are going to work on during the year, then we put together a schedule of which the committee does vote on. And it's, and it's about which policies are going to be addressed during the um school year. Uh, often what's driven initially for the policy for the year has to do with anything that has legal requirements. So if we, if there's mandates out there that say you must have a policy, then generally speaking, we want to try to address those as soon as possible just because legally we're required to have the policy. So we will, and like this last legislative session, they, you know, when they wrapped it up in April uh for the twenty two session, they were basically saying you must have a policy by July one twenty twenty two. Well, of course, we didn't have a policy by then. I mean, so they became, those policies were like the first ones we were working on to try to meet the requirement. Also, if there's any outdated policies that, again, have legal consequences and need to be updated, those often are ones that are placed on the agenda uh initially in the beginning of the year. And then if you've looked at any of our policies, we have very, a lot of very, very old policies that still sit on our website. And so then a lot of it is just the process of um, like things that are important. Like, for example, the data dashboard policy was outdated. And so they're working on that right now because of the fact that um more, we're doing more dashboards. Where the system wants to be more transparent and sharing how we are progressing towards meeting the goals of the strategic plan. And so that's why that came on the list, so that we could update it, so that we, you know, we're doing what we need to do uh to increase transparency, to inform the public about the progress that the school system has made on all the different goals that are addressed in the strategic plan. So part of it is just the operational piece of the school system or what's important from a practicality standpoint and moving forward. And some of it is legally based that we absolutely are required to do.
But is the, it is determined at the beginning of the school year what the list is and it's voted on. And so is it made public?
As posted, it actually, I was probably one, I, I'm thinking this past year, the chairperson presented it at um one of the first board meetings. It might have been the August board meeting. Presented the whole work schedule. Now, I want to say that if there's something comes to light, that uh that either the C E O or a board member um and the board, uh any board member has the right to um go to the board to say, I really would like us to look at this policy. So something comes to light throughout the school year that absolutely is a critical thing that needs to be addressed, then um it will be added into the, I, I mean, we can't add too many because there's only so many you can get done in a year. But we will certainly, um, I'm the committee generally, I should say, I shouldn't speak for the committee because I'm, you know, I'm there to assist the committee, not be part of the committee. But generally speaking, the committee uh will attempt to make it, you know, they'll make every effort to try to include that in the list of policies that need to be completed.
Okay, so, so what I hear is there may be an opportunity to, since it's public, that we can put some energy around advising the board to um promote the list, making people aware of it prior to a week or two weeks with that review or that meeting may be held to discuss. Um, and so you just added something else to the report, Mr. Ross. That's good. And and but that, because I, for me, like I am tracking um various bills in the House. So I can, I'm signed up, and so legal scan, I can click on which bill I want to track because I see all of them that they have for that session. And then it just sends me a notification and a reminder, hey, don't forget to sign up, you know, to send in your comments or whatever. So um I appreciate the question because it just moves us in a, another direction to be able to say, hey, there's more opportunities to get people, make them aware of something, which also may increase involvement. Right? Um, and it's not always, they don't have to be in person, but they can send in comment, whatever. But we're trying to figure out, I know we post a lot, we post a lot, we post a lot. But you know, wh- when are we going to do more of the, the push strategies where we're really engaging people about the why we need them to show up? And and I think that's something that we can put our heads around as a committee to provide that suggestion in some framework and some ideas and maybe how they can get that done. Yeah.
I think that's a good idea. I, I also have to say that in the, we, you know, we do have a public comment section of that meeting. And once in a blooming, we have someone, uh someone in the public that provides, comes and gives a comment. We say we have very little public comment either, also at these meetings, you know, that for people to come in and express their opinions about different things. And I know, again, the committee is very uh wel- you know, welcomes that, that, that input. It's very helpful for them, especially as they're moving forwards and working through the policies.
Yeah, and I, and I think that will help if we are able, as the P C A members, where we're going out. And part of our messaging is, you know, hey, you know, the board meeting is coming up, you know, did you sign up? Are you planning to ban attendance? Do you know what's, you know, so we need to be informed. We may be going out and talking to people, but we need to be informed about what's happening to let people know this is where you need to, you know, maybe show up, encourage some of your um peers in the community to be present. But helping them to, we're raising awareness.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Mr. Ross.
Yeah, and just to follow up, it's raising awareness, but also making sure people know at what point they can be effective. Because when a board poll, when a policy change comes up before the full Board of Education, it seems like it's too late to uh to have any real impact on it.
Right, the greatest, the, the greatest change can be when it goes out for the public comment, period. Because that's when, that is what's taken into consideration by the committee, which then, if they've accepted that, will then move forward to the board. So because once it's moved forward to first reader, then basically, and not to say you couldn't still go to a board meeting and give a comment about it, but it's the general way of what's done is catching it before it even gets to first reader and providing your comments.
Right, and and so that's making sure that people know it's a public comment before the committee. That's important, not the public comment before the board, although that is important too.
Right. Right. Yes, Mr. Epps?
Yeah, I have a question. So I'm, I'm wrapping my head around just like timelines and dates and kind of when things are made public, when things are not public. Um, and I'm wondering if so um Ms. Welsh, you said that um the priority, well, some of the priority on, on the policy updates is from a legal standpoint. So that's more like a, we have to do this, so we have a choice. If that's the case, how soon can we or is the public made aware? We have an expiration, uh expiration date on these set of policies? And get the word out, like, and what, what, what does that look like? Is it, is any work done on the, like, in the previous school year, like in late spring? So that this stuff is supposed to be for the following school year, because as a parent, when the school year starts and all the activities, a week's notice is just not enough. Um, if, if that's the case, from the amount of time of when I know about a policy and then I have time to make a comment about it.
See, I, I'm gonna need to go back and look at um both the committee meeting, uh some of the minutes, because we have them on Board Doc, just to see what happened in those meetings near the end of the school year, as well as the Board of Education meetings, to get, to be able to answer that question for you, to see just how far out was it that it, this all came to light, you know, that we were going to do these policies and stuff. So let me, I can go back and, and check and see when was the fir-, when did it first start appearing and showing where the public could be, you know? It's there, and the public could have commented probably earlier, but it's just, when did that process begin? So I can, I could look that up for you and, and find out.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Are there any other questions, comments? Ms. Welsh, thank you. Um, and does that conclude your report?
Yes, it does.
Thank you so much. This was awesome. And Dr. Jackson is um not here, but um I would like to take um a moment of privilege to just go back for my report. Um, I want to also make you all aware that uh Ms. Adam Stafford did provide a contact um name for union representation for P G C E A Union, which is the teachers' union. Um, but I also followed up um to ask was um the Association of Supervisory and Administrative School Professionals. Um, were they contacted and um considered for union representation? So I do want you all to know that that was asked, and my reason for that is um I am not against P G C E A, but I am very, we are all parents, right? We are all community members. Um, and so when we're coming for that district or that area of expertise, we're representing the whole of that. And so when that union representation is here, I want to be clear that that union representation, will they be in a position to speak for the labor um or the bargaining units? As a whole, will they be collaborating with them or just only speaking to their area um such as the teachers' unions? So that's important to me, that if we are talking about representation on this, that we are getting as many um voices to the table that are being impacted. Um, I know the teachers are, you know, right on the front line, but administrators, they, they really guide the impulse of the school. And they are the, the leaders, they're, they're the CEOs of the building. And so it's also important for us to hear and see things from their perspective, so having them also. Um part of this and at the table, um I want to make sure that it is. Um they were made aware of it, if they didn't accept or did accept, but I just want to make sure that we're we're not always looking at union has to be the PGCEA. Um so I want to um move off my one point six, we've finished one point seven, one point zero seven. And just move into discussion items, and um I just really have some high level um comments to make. And and we'll open it up for um some discussion. But this really was more so about giving some feedback. And I know a lot of you spoke about, well, everybody spoke about how you're already engaging and connecting with people in the community. Um I want to make sure that we are speaking from one voice, sharing the same message about why we're here. Um how we came about and what we decided would be the charge, which was engagement. How do we begin to um work to improve engagement, define engagement? Build capacity for people to engage and be better advocates, as well as build those relationships with our um um community stakeholders. Because all of the perspectives and stakeholders, it it matters what they believe and think, because at the end of the day, the number one goal. Is to support the academic success of students. So when you're going out and saying who you are and what you're doing, I hope that you are staying in line with that we are an advisory council. That the information that we may be receiving, we are working closely with our board members and coming together collectively. To identify how to present um what we're hearing and keeping our pulse on the community. But bringing that information in alignment with with the policies and procedures that are out there. So as they're getting ready to make their list for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, right? That that we've had some input and really are making sure that people understand why we need their involvement. And so an idea after speaking to so, you know, some of the board members. Um an idea came about how can we support um getting, and we just, we're having this discussion. More people um to be in attendance at board meetings, to um give public comment in writing. Because I don't want us to think that if you're not in the seat, that you're not engaged. Be- because I believe that is a very antiquated way about looking at how involved or committed a person is. If I don't show up, I don't care. No, I may have other obligations that may be competing. So how do we kind of connect um with? You know, our community, right? The districts that we're in, our our area of expertise to say, this is what. Um we need to do and change in the narrative, like a lot of things that you said, you know, Ms. Welsh, I was just like, okay. That's very high. And and most people are not going to say, oh, yeah, I'm going to run out and I I'm going to speak because the building is getting, the name is getting changed, right? But if they kind of see why, you know, um they they may want to get involved in that, in the impact that it can have on the community, right? In having a name, you know, the school named after a pillar in the community, someone who was a trailblazer. Then then they may, you know, you we may increase input, um do encourage people when we're talking to the P T Os. If you can't come out, how many people in your peer group can you get every month to sit in a seat or send a letter? Talking about the great things that are happening at your school, as well as um any issues and concerns that you may have, because. Going to the board is not about complaining. It's about saying that we're here as partners, this is what we see as working, and this is what we also see it needs some improvement. And so that really was what I wanted to communicate in item two point zero one for increasing parent community engagement. That that we begin to think about um what we're doing. And my my goal is to have that that spreadsheet up, so you can just send in those ideas. Because I know we have an hour, we're we're, you know, it's supposed to be set for an hour, but I I never want to rush our discussions. And it just seems like it's never enough, because we're talking a lot, but how are we moving to do things and really begin to show some impact in the community? Um so I want to open up if there are any comments, any questions. No? Dr. Porter?
Yeah, I was.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to know, I know there's been a collection of parent organization contacts for the schools. Um will that list be made accessible um for us?
Yes, so that was supposed to be a part of Dr. Jackson's um report. And it was my understanding that she would have gotten um the finalized report by January thirty-first. And then she would be able to share that with us um, you know, this month, in February. So, yes, that that is coming, and she has been working on it. And I know the last conversation is she just had a a couple of schools that may not had, have had parent groups. But was just like, hey, I need to, the name of a parent who's shown some leadership qualities in your school. That can maybe help us galvanize the other parents. And, you know, so it may not just be an organization, it may just be a parent, but each school is supposed to have. Representation that we also get, which helps us, right? It helps us have a condensed list of who we need to go to. So yes, it it is forthcoming. Yeah, okay, who was next? Ms. Lundey?
Yes, thank you so much. So um I think um to answer your question. Um one of the things that I thought was very helpful was when we, when um Adam Stanford, Board Member Adam Stanford had myself and Ms. Thor. Um to do a breakout session, and in that breakout session, we actually did meet with um parent leaders. And P T S A leaders, so that was a way to engage them, and some great things came out of that meeting, some of their concerns. And then as a result of that, that basically informed us. When we as PAC PAC members got together um on that, you know, later on that Saturday, because the meeting was last Saturday, and we got together. And when it's time to do the round robin, this time, I know next meeting, we're going to do the form. But maybe when we come to the um part of the meeting where Ms. Thor can share some things that came out of our meeting. But one of the ways that we're doing it is working with our board member. When she actually did, and maybe someone might want to recommend to the other board members to have like the P C A member for that district to come in. And and host a breakout session, the same way Adam Stanford did, and it was, it was excellent, it really was. And then one of the things that I had um mentioned about is, and you informed me and I, you know, that was really good too, is about. Maybe the board members taking um their meetings um in the community, such as they do with the um, what you call it, with the budget meetings. So maybe we need to get back to doing that, to go where the actual, where where the people are, where the parents are, where the community groups are. So I don't know how, what the frequency of that would be, but maybe that could be a recommendation that we could put in our report. That they can take those meetings out into the community and actually reach the people.
Yes.
Much.
Mr. Epps?
Uh, yeah, I want to really tie into this one. I wasn't going to say this because I think it's too out of the box at times, but we also uh. We have to figure out, and this is an investment of resource, how to reach today's parent. Um, you know, and 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 for me, a big part of that is where where are people? They're on Twitter, they're on YouTube Shorts.
Mm hmm.
You know, they are short videos, they are on LinkedIn, um and would have. Um our school system has some sort of um mechanism to get like past policy changes. Have shorts cut up of the board meeting and have the, a video of five minutes with different parts. And that's making, so so we missed the last meeting. But that's bringing awareness to. The present day parent of, oh, this is what happened last week, and this is really good to put together, and then the announcement of the next meeting schedule is on that same. Uh sequence of communication, so it's, I think the, well, I mean, I mean, let me speak for myself. The last thing I think I have the time to invest is to go somewhere for an hour or two.
Mm hmm.
And I don't want it to sound selfish about it, but I think also I'd better, that a lot of my peers are saying the same thing, right? And if, but however, if I'm, you know, eight thirty and 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 kind of just going through my phone uh too much like I am now. And I see a short for five minutes that, and and I do have an interest in 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 policy change, I do have. And Mrs. Wells answer to, you know, okay, here's what's coming up, uh what we have to do legally, nobody may care about this, but this is coming up, and it's a short. Around it, and even if I don't make the board meeting around it, I can still go back. To that short summarized video, and in two, three years, that's more awareness of what's happening at these meetings. Even though it may not be, um we don't get, uh I I forgot what Ms. Welsh called it, an opportunity to speak in in real time. You know, in the future, you're going to have more parents that are that are aware of what's happening because of, we're we're bringing communication to them in the day and age. Of how we all communicate, for the most part.
Yeah, that that that's an excellent idea, and I I am just hoping. That once I, um the draft of the 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 mid-year report will be done this week. And when I send it out, I will be asking for um. Comments to be added to that, for recommendations to the boards, on asking that you all do read it. Because our March meeting will require us to review that document, approve it before we send it forward to the board. Um so thi- this is, this is, this is exactly what. They need to hear, that we can't keep doing things the same way. I, we can't, and like Ms. Lundey said, you know, coming all the way down southern. If you live in the north to a board meeting after a long day's work, you know, I mean, I live around the corner. And I can tell you, i- it's still, I go at seven o'clock, and then it's like, okay, I gotta go. You know, but I I I don't also have the time to be there, and so these are the ideas that we got to change. How we define engagement as well, and and that's what I'm hoping that we can get to at some point. Um Ms. Lundey, you still have your hand up?
Yes, I have a a follow-up, and I I agree with um with um Vice Chair Els, I think, the hybrid approach, giving people choices. Is is a, is a great thing, so I'm definitely in favor of that.
Yeah, so thank you. Do we have any more comments? Nope. Um item two point zero two, PG C P S Engagement Survey Development, so um. I did meet with Dr. Jackson, I met with um Ms. Rashida Tyler and another representative from her office, she's with Strategic Planning. And Change Management, and and we spoke about um an engagement survey. Uh we talked briefly about the Climate and Culture Survey, and I stated that that, that's not going to work. Um from me as a parent, you only were allowed to address. Um from a student perspective, well, not a student perspective, just student, your eldest student, right? So I have two children. And one is in middle school and one is in elementary school, and my engagement is very different in my middle school than it is in my, in the elementary school. So if I can only give you one response from one child, then you've missed out on an opportunity. To kind of address some other issues that may be out there, and so um. They did recommend that they want to wait to pull the data from the climate survey. Before they um got together a work group. And based on the, they did have an increase in people who uh completed the survey. And I'm not going to communicate the number, because to me, you know, based on, if you have a hundred thousand, if you have six thousand, that's that. It has no impact, right? And so I suggested that they move forward with the work group. Which means that you are then pulling the community together and, you know. To have the discussions, and then while you're building that relationship with those individuals, when you get the data, which is actually coming in a couple of weeks. Then you can begin to bring that before them as well, to discuss some of the things that were um that were seen in the climate survey. But because it was um. The the questions to me were not in a way that you allowed me, you asked questions such as if my child is. Do I believe that the the teacher is building a um uh in instructing my child properly or providing additional resources to close gaps? Well, if I'm not engaging with the teacher, I can't really say yes or no, and you didn't offer me in between, it was either yes or no. And I may have just wanted to say, I don't know. I I didn't want to say the teacher is not, and they may be doing it, or, you know, I just don't know, so. What they will be doing is when they develop the questions, they will bring it back um to us. As a committee, because they wanted to know if, you know, we were developing the survey, and I was like, no, because that's not what we do. You you all have the experts there, we don't even have the capacity, so we want you all to start development of it. You know, we can give you feedback from it, but they will also be the ones to deploy the survey. Um they would be the ones, they're using Hanover, um who will be a part of facilitating the work group discussion. And um so after that discussion, they then went and they were going to be meeting with Dr. Jackson. Because um Dr. Porter, from that um, that parent list. They will also be making sure that every parent on that list or or parent group is contacted. Along with us to be a part of the discussion. I advise them that it's not just also about parents, that they need to speak to administrators. Um they need to speak to custodial staff, bus drivers, every group needs to be represented. And be a part of the work group, and I was very pleased when Ms. Tyler mentioned. It's great to have the students who are performing well, but we want students who are having challenges, we want students who repeated grades, we want students who. Have had some discipline issues, we want to tap into people in that we're touching who've pretty much had different walks, right? In the interaction with the school system, but give them the place to have their voice heard. Um there was a concern about engagement and how would they get the word out? And and I'm excited, because a lot of things that you all just mentioned, I mentioned the same thing to them, like, we got to stop. Nobody's reading a whole dissertation, you know, nobody's reading the email, the board, the student board member is the most powerful, you know, hidden. Tool that we have here in PG C P S, you increase student participation in it by having a quick video that goes out. You know, and saying, hey, you know, you need to fill this out, da 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 da, because nobody's, like you said, reading it, but if you give me a quick video. And you tell me this is why I need to do it, oh, you may increase my engagement, you use students to encourage parental. Participation, because if my seven-year-old comes home every day and said, I get a dress down pass, do you complete the survey? I'm going to complete the survey, so she can just stop asking me, did I complete the survey, right? And so we we have to engage differently and and partner and interact with people, because just sending it out, you know. I I I may overlook it with the million and one emails that I'm getting, I might not see it. So they will be reaching out um in the next couple of weeks. Um Ms. Tyler will be working with Dr. Jackson, and then once they begin to work on um a draft. Hopefully by next month, they will have something, but we should be hearing more about the work groups. Um and although I had the initial meeting, I will be reaching out to, I mean, oh, just email me, tell me who would like to begin to be a part. Of that discussion and really work with Dr. Jackson and Ms. Tyler to kind of spearhead some of that work that will then be brought back to. Um the the committee, because we did talk about subcommittees. The issue with that is funding, and Ms. Lopez is amazing. Um but there are only four other peers that she has like her, right? It's only five of you at total in the office. They are supporting all of the other board members, as well as us in the committees. So to ask them to take on additional time out of schedule to have additional meetings, I didn't think that was fair, and I did not think that was a. Good use of time, so um. There will be the the work that's happening behind the scenes with the the, what I'd like to call the administrative and discovery work. And then it will be brought back to us for, you know. Vote final say that will then be sent to the board and the CEO in recommendations for the survey, which, and then the survey. Um we're looking to have this survey to go out um at the end of this school year or at the beginning of the next school year. But the work groups will be continuous prior to the survey going out. Because that information would just be the additional information that's necessary to help us build out the policy and administrative procedures. And the engagement framework that is equitable for PG C P S. That's it. Any questions, comments? I've been meeting a lot, you guys, a whole lot. Um the last one, um item two point three, it's not the last, but. The um P C A retreat, we talked about it briefly. Um we didn't have a date or anything set, so what I would like to do is if we can quickly. Um give me um any ideas or comments, or you all can email it, right? Because I I know it's getting late. But the whole idea, I spoke with Dr. Jackson as well, and since her department and and what they do, right, they do engagement. Um to lead some. And since her department and and what they do, right? They do engagement um to lead some. To um, develop some team-building activities for us. Because the idea for the retreat is to kinda build some cohesiveness between us, so we can get to know one another. And Dr. Jackson also mentioned that when doing that, it will be focused around what we have agreed to discuss, which would be engagement. And so we're not just gonna be team-building to know that, you know, I like dark chocolate, I really don't like milk chocolate, you know. You'll know that, you know that now, right? But it's more so if we wanna focus on those policies and how do we get out and build capacity in the community, then it, it's going to work. When we understand and we can see it and then demonstrate it during this retreat. Um, I would like to, Ms. Adam Stafford, I know you're here, um, just put out there that I would like to invite. The Chair of the Board as well as Dr. Gosin um to the retreat to um quickly um engage with us. About what some of their thoughts are, but I would also like to invite them to our March meeting. Because we have um yet to kinda sit down with the leadership to get their understanding of what. Why we're here and we're not just here because we, law says we have to be here, so it's not a compliant activity, but we have their support. And that we are, um, we, we're aware of the team that we have behind us and in front of us. And so I'll step, stop on that for the P C A retreat. Um, it's only gonna be four hours. We'll have, uh, we're going to request light refreshments, continental breakfast and lunch. And um, over by one o'clock, two o'clock at the latest, ten. Yeah, one o'clock, two o'clock, just four hours, though. We don't wanna start too early, cuz I gotta drop off kids for school. And I won't wanna be there all day, um, like I'm actually at my nine to five at least. So um, any questions, comments? If, like I said, I will have something up that you all can send um some comments, and I am meeting with um, um, Co-Chair Epps. As well as um, um, Board Liaison Adam Stafford on Friday at one P M. To kinda get a better understanding of um, you know, who are the vendors? Because, you know, I gotta provide a proposal, but what are the approved PG CPS vendors that um I am looking to provide the food from? And Dr. Jackson will pretty much be getting the materials, um, so it's really not gonna be a big cost in the location. Right now is um probably at the Board Office in Upper Marlboro. Ms. Welsh, I think I send your hand up first, and then Ms. Walker.
You have an idea, like, and I know you don't have a specific date, but do you have a sense or an idea of when you think this might be, like, which month or whatever? Like, how soon or?
So I, probably April or May. Um, you know, I mean, cuz realistically, you know, we gotta get logistics together, and I wanna send the information out to you all. Uh, because it really is based on us all being there, and so that's probably gonna be the most difficult thing. How are we all going to get together during the daytime? Right? Um, and what does that look like for those of you who also actually work for PG CPS? Cuz I don't want you to have to take off leave, so I'm gonna try to negotiate whatever I can for you all. Um, cuz you shouldn't have to take off leave. So. Ms. Walker?
That, that was my question, just about the timing and date, that's all.
Yes, um. Okay, so. And I, like, we just talked about making sure that we're available, you know, um, to meet people where they are. We will definitely take that into consideration. Um, the piece that we just have to be mindful of is the um, board support. And um, it's not a lot of them, and so, and I don't wanna tax them and overtax them. So if we can just kinda find four hours that kinda alleviates some of the work, cuz we're also getting into budget season and that, that's very heavy for them as well.
I, I had a question, Madam Chair.
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Lundey.
No worries. So um, everybody talked about the time, I had two statements. So you were looking at a weekday versus a weekend? I guess I heard you say that.
Yes.
And my second thing is, were you inviting um the student board member?
Well, I mean, he's, he's, he's part of the board, so.
You only mentioned the ch- the chair and the C E O, so.
So what, so let me just say, the idea was really just to have the leadership represented, right? Cuz it's four hours, right? And so the Board Chair represents the student board member. And then Dr. Gosin for, as the C E O. And so um, it's not a close, if they wanna come in and come by, but they won't be on the agenda. I'm not suggesting, now, if you wanna suggest that they be on the agenda and why, but please provide that. Um, but I just want us to be mindful, we only have four hours, and this is just one of the retreats we'll be having. I also did speak to my board member, and he mentioned to me that during the board retreat. He is going to bring up and suggest that we be invited to the board's retreat. And that in attendance there, that we get to work and go off in some, you know, break up group, break off groups. Um, and work on engagement and then come back full circle to bring it all together. So there, there are a lot of discussions being had and how, and like Ms. Adam Stafford mentioned on February twenty-third for the reception. Um, I don't know if we need to vote on that. Do we need to vote on that? Ms. Adam Stafford, do, is that, do we need to have a vote for that? I don't know. Um, so, yes, Ms. Lundey. Um, I was not thinking to have him come out and speak in me, but I do. Um, I know I heard from some of you all, and I would like for Dr. um Gosin as well is um, um, Ms. Mickens Murray. To come and and address us as a standing committee with PG CPS. And that also shows, you know, their commitment to the work that we're doing. And we want them to know that we're also committed to the work that we signed up for. Okay? Any other questions, comments? Nope. We'll move on to item um, two point four. P C A Committee District Updates. And Ms. Lundey, I, I wanna turn this over to you, cuz the conversation that we had, so if you can quickly, I know I had mentioned it, but just, just say. You know, where, where it came from when we talked about the Google Form and how you also thought that it could be a benefit.
Oh, yeah, so really have not too much to, to add to, cuz you know, you kinda like summed everything up. But the idea was, you know, instead of us perhaps doing the round, the Robin type thing for everyone. As we are out in the community and working and serving or meeting or what have you, we would um put in that Google Doc form what we're doing. And then from that, that would help maybe to um, help the Chair and the Vice Chair, whomever puts the agenda together. You know, which, which committee members we might wanna hear from at that time, but understanding that I hear, I hear the people's brains going, understanding that this is a public meeting. Um, that might not work for you all, you might wanna do both, you might wanna do the Google Doc form. And still go and do the round, you know, the round robin type thing as well, because it is a public meeting. And maybe within our district, everybody wanna hear from everybody. So it's a, it's something that we can decide amongst ourselves as a committee, but I do like the idea. That's why I suggested the Google Doc form, so we can have stuff in writing, we can have stuff documented. So maybe Chairman House, we can continue to do the round robin, but still have that, that Google Doc form to help you all to put the agenda together.
And I, I think, and and I, I appreciate you giving that follow-up, because we can also with the Google Doc form. We could still bring that during discussion and share out the highlights from the forum, and it can also be made public, right? It can be condensed and made public, and so then it'll just go on Board Docs as um information that was provided from the committee members. Um, you know, because it, it helps us kinda manage our time, right? So if we have something quick that we wanna shoot in, and we know we wanna be off here by eight thirty or eight o'clock, you know. That's just my two cents. Anyone else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lundey. Any other comments? So is anyone opposed to um, doing the form? Okay, I'm sorry, I, I, no one's supposed to do on the form. Um, and so I don't, I don't think we need to do a vote on that. Do, do we, Ms. Lopez? You know, we, we'll just, I mean, it's not something that we had set and saw by, by law need to change, but we will, you know, have the form. And I will um just read it out um during the, my report as information that was shared. And then, or I can put on there as an update, and then if anyone has any um additional things to add, like we're doing right now. Does anyone have any comment from their district that's um, exciting or not exciting they wanna share? No? And it's okay. Ms. Lopez?
Uh, uh, no, the only recommendation, I will do it if, uh, if you, um, just be mindful about doing a Google Form. Um, and, and I guess that will have to be um made public and posted once you have that information. So the public will know that, you know, um, the reasons as to why you did, you know, you took that venue.
Uh huh. Okay, well, so then we'll do that, and so we'll have it posted, like we have to do for the agenda and the items for. The agenda prior to the meeting, and I'll just have a cutoff date, so for this meeting, these are the last items to be sent in. So I'll make sure that's clear on the form, and then it'll be um summarized and, well, not summarized, but just um. Condensed and put on a document for public view. Right? Okay, um, item three point zero, follow-up and next steps. Um, at this time, and Ms. Can, can you just, Ms. Lopez, just real quick. The date for two twenty-three?
Um, oh, uh, uh, remember when um, more member Adam Stafford mentioned about the reception, the meeting greet?
Uh huh.
Yes, uh, February twenty-third.
Uh huh.
Um, yes, I know she mentioned that date, um, but I believe um. More Chair and then I, I, Ms. Adam Stafford, if you're here, um, she is, um, she, she is flexible with both. Either February twenty-third or March twenty-third at four P M before the board meetings.
Uh huh.
So um, if the, if the committee can um decide and confirm on a date. And our member Adam Stafford will need to send that information, that confirmation to um our Board Chair.
And so you, you're wanting us to decide right now, is if the board meeting for, what is it, February twenty-third? Is it February twenty-third or March twenty-third? Is the preferred meeting for the reception, for the meeting greet? Yes? Okay, so are you all in the position to um make a vote on um attending the board? Um, or the board having a reception for us on February twenty-third or March twenty-third at four P M? Would like to make a motion to accept the February twenty-third date. At four P M at the Board Office in Upper Marlboro for the reception.
So moved.
A second.
Who's second?
Dolores, can I second that? I can second that. Dolores, know how to second that.
Okay.
And, and say, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the February twenty-third date at four P M will be the date. For the reception, meet and greet with the board. Um, and all we have to do is look beautiful and handsome and show up, right? Okay, well, we'll be there. Thank you. Um, so three point zero, follow-up and next steps. Um, any follow-ups from the P C A meeting will be posted on the Board Docs upon receipt. And the follow-up um that I have will be um notes from our meeting on Friday. That will provide further discussion about the retreat. Um, as well as the um Google Form and the um draft report. To be um submitted to the Board um Liaison in March. Three dot two, next steps, the next meeting date will be on Wednesday, March first, twenty twenty-three at seven P M via Zoom. Um, and I also wanna add, please make sure that um the jumpstart, your engagement document. I also want that email shared with you all, a survey for um the Blueprint, um PG CPS Blueprint Work um. Work Group Committee is asking for feedback, please share that with as many constituents as you can. Um, because we need um people to be involved, to be connected and to know that their voice does matter. And I am working on a single document to also share from the Blueprint Work Group. That is very clear and concise, and I also asked them to do a um, you know. Quick bullet points and send out a little video or something, so we can get the information out. And if people are reading, if people are just viewing, at least we know we can just hit send and continue to share it and ask people to share and share and share. So that's it for my closing remarks. Um, thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. May I have a um motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All, all in favor? Any opposed? Meeting adjourned, and thank you, and have a beautiful blessed night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Bye.